Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Delgrillo.
Here.
Meringa.
Here.
Nordhook.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Here.
Vanderwall.
Here.
And Mirma.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Bud Pratt from Granville First Reformed Church, and this is the last time that he'll be here as he's retiring.
In two weeks.
In two weeks, so hopefully you're coming to visit us. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. We're going to follow that by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, you have promised good to those who seek your path of wisdom and understanding. We seek your blessing in all that happens here tonight, that it might be done according to your will and to your honor and glory. Allow what is accomplished to be done with integrity and respect as we all seek what is best for those who live in this community. We remember with thanksgiving and praise all of your faithful servants who throughout the centuries have witnessed to your name, especially the brave and courageous veterans in our country's history who have secured for us the freedoms that we enjoy. We are grateful for their sacrifice and their service to our nation. We ask that you would hold the current military men and women in your strong arms, cover them with your sheltering grace as they stand in the gap for our protection. Remember as well, Lord, our first responders, police, firefighters, emergency medical technicians. Allow your unique blessings to fill their homes with your peace and provision and strength. Tonight, Lord, may the members of this council be filled with courage to face each day and each decision with your wisdom and mighty power to accomplish the task that this town asks of them. Let them feel our love and support. I pray this in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, for being with us and for all you've done. And there will be a fine replacement coming your way. All right. Thank you very much. Also like to welcome Dennis, our new city manager, who's been on the job for a week. So we're so glad you're here. We hope that you love us Granville as much as we do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I forget, council member Nordhook, has that been asked to be excused? He has a son who has had a lot of medical things going on lately, and his son is supposed to be moved out of ICU. This is according to Facebook, so out of ICU this week. And so Justin hopes to be here for next week, our meeting that's been moved up a week. So is there motion to excuse Justin?
So moved.
There's motion, a lot of support. So, okay. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Great. We have a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support. Motion, support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. In the opposition, please say no. We have also the minutes from our last meeting, November 28. Marcy, good job as always, but does anybody have any additions, corrections, anything they'd like to point out? Emphasize? If not, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Great. Now, we come to presentation of bills, and kind of a substantial amount tonight, approximately $481,000. So Dennis, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to point out or just open it up for questions?
Matt has schooled me on three things to mention this evening. He's given me notes. There are two items on the bill registry that are DDA related. One was for $5,000 for the DDA facade grant for Wild Roast Coffee, and then also the new decorations for Chicago Drive, the Planters and the Farmers Market. And then the third one was $600 for the cruise under Parks and Rec area, which included the removal of the kayak launch for the season, which we'll be bringing back next spring.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions for either Jane or Dennis about any of the bills? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $481,580.40?
So moved.
Support.
Motion, support. Any other discussion, questions, comments? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meringa.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Delgrillo.
Yes.
And Mirma.
Yes. Well, before we open it up to public comment, we have a presentation by our friend Superintendent Roger Barup. Welcome. We see a lot of construction going on, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sure we would love an update on what all you're doing.
You bet. Well, first of all, thank you for having me. Thank you for our partnership. I mean, you know, this is a very special place, and, you know, we hear a lot from city officials and appreciating the partnership and right back at you. I mean, we are so blessed in this community to have the partnerships that we do in so many ways. So thank you so much for that, first of all. What I wanted to do right now, being passed along to you, is our strategic plan. We started this process pre-COVID and finished up during COVID. But just to give you an overview, you know, what we wanted to do was have a one-page, living, breathing document, a document that asking input from community, input from parents, input from staff, input from our scholars. You know, what are we about and how should we go about our business? We wanted to have something that was a visual that we could hang up somewhere, but not just hang up and collect dust where people go, oh, that's nice. Because I think a lot of times, whether it's a mission, a vision, a strategic plan, you know, people usually come up with a great visual and have some of the very similar words in them, and they're on a wall, and nobody really pays much attention to them. And so it's very important to us to have a living, breathing document, and a document that says, you know, how we're going to go about our business, what we value, what we believe, and what we're trying to grow in our scholars. You know, when they leave us, what are the knowledge, the skills, the things we want them to have as they go into post-secondary, whether it's in college or career training, whatever it might be. So I wanted to give that to you. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that piece, but I wanted you to see that. I mean, that is what our community, our parents, our staff, and our scholars have said Granville Public Schools is. So I just wanted to share that with you. Really, we, coming out of a pandemic, we're focused on two things. And we talk about these all the time. Number one, we want to ensure that each scholar reaches their fullest academic potential. We know if each scholar does that, no matter what their dreams are, no matter what they decide to do when they leave us, they are going to have the knowledge and skills to be successful. Number two, it's very important to us that every scholar who comes through our doors, notice I didn't say walks through our doors, but every student who comes through our doors, that they feel safe, they have confidence, they feel a sense of belonging. I belong here. This is my school. And we want to ensure that academically, socially, and emotionally, they have the support systems to help them reach their fullest academic potential, what we talked about. The reason why I didn't say walk is because some kids, some scholars don't walk through our doors. I was reminded of that one day, and it really hit me right between the eyes because I had a student who said, but Mr. Barup, I don't walk through your doors. I'm in a wheelchair. And so again, that's a, that's a, you know, it's an acknowledgement of the importance that we understand that we have all different types of students that enter our doors and that it's important that we can support them in no matter, you know, what way they need, when they need it. So again, those two things are what we're about. Want to talk about construction. Yes, we have a lot of construction going on. Very excited, very thankful to our community for the bond issue that we received not too long ago. And so right now, several projects. First one I'll talk about, I know you've more than likely been over by Mars Hill Brands and so on and seen the wonderful transformation over there. We have two things happening. We have what's called the Granville Education Center at the end of the building where Mars Hill and the Y are. We have that, and that houses our alternative ed, and it also houses an area that we're transforming into an area where we'll be able to have a lot of parent education classes, a lot of teacher education classes, a lot of more intimate performances. And so we're very, very excited about that. As we are, as I mentioned, our alternative program, our pathways program, which is, I mean, it has really been an avenue of success for many kids and continues to be so very excited about that. The other part of the building is a Granville Early Childhood Education Center, and that houses many preschool programs. We have our tuition preschool, our readiness. We also have our childcare, before-after-school childcare that are there. And we're almost complete with that, and it's beautiful. If you haven't been in there, I invite you to go in and take a tour. It is just amazing. If you want me to go, I'm more than happy to go. I'd love to show off that building, but it's just a beautiful space. We knew that we had to grow our early childhood programs here in our community, and so we've been doing that there. We still have the ability to expand and have approximately three more classrooms that we'll be adding over time. So just very excited about that. In the past, we've had, you know, a huge waiting list for early childhood programs. We've been able to make a dent in that, and we believe with the addition of the other classrooms, we'll be able to really fulfill that need that is there. So very excited about that, and again, I encourage you to visit that. I get asked a lot, you know, people get gas at Costco and they say, whoa, look at the building that's up there. We have a new middle school, as you know, that's going in there, a seven, eight building. Very excited about that. It is, you know, it's huge. It is a big space, and it's a big space not only because it's, I mean, it's a quality middle school. It has a walking track, it has a weight room, it has a huge science wing that's just beautiful, STEM area. But it also has attached to it something that we don't believe anyone in the nation has, and that is a competition center for robotics. That is attached to the canal side. If you look off at the building, there is a competition center there that includes an area where robotics from day to day will, they'll do their thing. They'll build their robots and do all of the things that they do within our robotics program. But then there also are competition spaces. There are really two full lengths of gyms that are attached there along with the robotics center itself. So they will be able to house national championships, national competitions, state championships, and, you know, people from all over, not only the country, but all over the world because there are some world teams that go to the national championships. So that will attract some huge crowds, and we're excited about it. You know, we've had the people from the national championships, the committees and so on, have already visited and said, we want to have one there, and, you know, we're ready to roll. So as soon as we're ready, I think they're ready. The neat thing about that, which I know many of you know, is when you attract people from all over the country, you know, they're coming to your town, they're going to shop in your stores, they're going to eat in your restaurants, they're going to stay in your hotels and experience everything that is Granville. So I think it's a plus for everyone to have that happening. I know Doug Heffer, the head of robotics, is so excited, and he's already got a calendar lined up of events that'll happen there. So really excited about our middle school. I think it's going to be a beautiful school, and on top of it, has that unique quality of a competition center that I don't believe anyone else really has. So again, very excited about that. Our scholars are scheduled to move into that building next fall. So it went fast. I mean, it seemed, you know, to a lot of people like, wow, that's really out there. But, you know, here it is, next fall. We're already planning the move. We've met with the staff, talked about the process of moving people to their classrooms and getting in and being able to be ready for the fall. Our construction crew is very confident right now that we're going to be ready. And we've had, you know, a lot of people are having supply-demand issues and so on. We were very fortunate. We got out ahead of a lot of that. We were able to bid out materials early and store everything we could store because we were worried that there were going to be supply issues. And thus far, we've been very fortunate. And not to mention, we got them at cost that a lot of people are paying a lot more now than they did when we purchased them. So again, very excited about our kids moving in there next fall. When that happens, our current middle school will have a year of being renovated. Now, there's a lot of great things that happened to that building previously in a previous bond, but there were also areas that were never touched. I've taken alumni through, you know, from back in the day, and they'll say, oh, this looks exactly like it did when I went to high school here. So there are a lot of things like that still there that weren't touched, and so we're going to work on those. And we've really been designing that, I mean, to transform it into a five-six building. There are some things that we'll keep that are just beautiful, and, I mean, the music wing as an example. I can't think of any fifth or sixth graders in any building I've ever been in that have that kind of facility. So I think that's going to be great for our kids. But at the same time, there will be some things we'll want to have, some unique qualities designed for fifth and sixth graders. So Brian Mulder, you may know him, he's the West Elementary Principal. He will be the new five-six principal. We went through that process, named him yesterday. And we're really looking at doing some things that are high engagement, high relationships, high parent involvement. We really want that to be a hub for a lot of engagement, parental involvement, and so on. So we're going to try to do some things there. We'll keep the traditional excellence of Granville Public Schools, but at the same time, try some things that really improve engagement and parental involvement while we're doing it. At the same time, community ed will be moving over to that area. So you really will have that central hub of our city where a lot of the activities and things will happen. We're also doing some renovations in that building where they'll be able to have a lot of different classes and so on right there within. You know the pool's there, we're redoing the pool. The gym's already beautiful, but there'll be a lot of opportunities to do classes right there where community ed is at that we haven't been able to do before. So again, very, very excited about that. That will open that following fall. So you have the fall of '23, '07, '08, the fall of '24, five-six. And then what that does is that makes our elementaries K-4, and it allows us to expand programming. It allows us to ensure our music, our, as an example, classes like that are not on a cart, but they have their own space and their own classroom. But again, it'll really allow us to expand some things within the buildings to open up many possibilities. So very excited about that. So all in all, very excited. We have had a tremendous first part of the year. We, you know, this fall has been what we thought last fall was going to be, and we had that curve ball with the pandemic. This fall has been great. We've really been able to get back to focusing on teaching and learning and ensuring that our students have the support systems that they need to reach their fullest potential. So at this time, I'll open it up. If you have any questions, that would be a great time.
Questions, Roger.
I don't have any questions, Roger, but I have a few comments. One, I'm on the WCT board, and I just keep hearing great comments about the partnership with the media people in the high school. So kudos to the high school administration, the high school media teachers for their work in getting kids involved in WCT. I'm really excited to see grade six move in, or grade five move in with grade six so you don't have this building with just one grade where kids go and say, hey, I'm in, and next year I'll be out. But you've got two years planned for them, and excited about the space that's opening up in the elementary school for the special classes. And lastly, on your strategic plan, you say we grow students who are ethical citizens is the first thing. The last thing is leaders. We had a chance to meet a grad this summer who was running for school board, Cameron. Then I came and pronounced his last name. Zipkowski. And, you know, he came here and spoke to us and did a great job, loved the school, loved his education, and he's a future leader, and I just can't say enough good things about what Granville Public Schools does for our community.
Thanks, Tim. And looking at you and knowing you and I had a partnership for a while when you were at Calvin Christian, I want to mention that, too. We are so unique because we have great relationships with our private schools, and I have never seen partnerships like that, you know, as we have here in Granville. It's just amazing, and we continue to work together at Granville Calvin Christian. So just love their people and their schools. We are something I failed to mention. I know, you know, Calvin Christian utilizes the field there by what will be our new five-six building, and we're converting what is currently the STEM area into a new team room. So they're going to be able to experience that as well. So, but yeah, we just appreciate those partnerships. Thank you.
Well, I'll just make a comment. When I come and visit at the school board, I've said it before. So since I became mayor, the valuation of property has gone up by over a half a billion dollars, and as much as I'd like to think it's because of good government and the mayor. We know it's not. I mean, we all appreciate good government, but people move to Granville because of the schools. I mean, you make our job very easy, and you make it and help make it an attractive community. So thank you.
Well, we appreciate the partnership, and we appreciate everything you do as well. So thank you.
Yeah, so kind of along with that with partnerships. So Roger, I'm on the Park and Rec Board representing the city, but we've also always had a school board member on there as well. We've had Amy currently, we've had Bob previously, and they've done a great job on the Park and Rec Board, and that's just another example, the city, the schools, and the community kind of working together on the parks. Pretty much most of our park facilities are adjacent to a school property, and, you know, there's been a lot of collaboration there over the years. A lot of that was kind of by intent years ago. And that's also kind of a unique situation where you've got the city and the school district working so closely together on the park and recreational opportunities. Lisa's been there for many years as well, you know, running the community ed program. She does a wonderful job, and it's just been great to have that collaboration as well. So thanks for sending us great people to the Park and Rec Board to work on.
Yeah, I'll just echo that, you know, along the Park and Rec Board, the Fourth of July is something, she used to be part of the Park and Rec Board, it's now separate though, but it's something that we partner, as you know, with the school system. I don't know if you remember the first time you and I met, actually. You were pretty new to Granville and was to butt heads over the three-on-three basketball over there. Anyway, you made a great decision on that, by the way, and it turned out just fine. But we really appreciate being able to use the middle school property. You know, I've always considered that that lawn is like Granville's front lawn, you know, for the whole community, and I really appreciate that the school system has kept that green area open. I really, I mean, you can't, you can't put a price tag on green spaces in the urban areas, and that one's priceless. Yeah, thanks.
I guess I better chime in. Well, as one of the few people on this side of the desk that has kids in the public schools, I'm obviously grateful for all that you and your team and your school board has done. I know Marley, who's currently in fifth grade, is very excited to hit that seven, eight building, and it's going to be a great space. And hopefully, in that neighboring property, we can get a pool up there one of these days. I know we narrowly missed that in 2019, so hopefully that's on your strategic vision board for Granville. But thanks for all you do, Roger.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you very much. Time for public comment. Anybody here like to make public comment? Just ask you to come up to the podium, give us your name, address. Keep your comments down to say five minutes or so. And.
Since Roger's here, this is really appropriate, but I just wanted to take a second. I guess it was the third of December, the first Saturday of the month we did the fire department, their annual shop with the hero program. That's a collaborative effort between Granville Public Schools and our local Meyer here in town. And our school partners are fantastic. They sent almost the whole faculty from the elementary school we partnered with. Our local Meyer and Meyer Corporation is fantastic. They financed the whole thing, and it was a great day. At the end of the day, nineteen families were able to have a holiday shopping experience thanks to that collaboration. So thanks to Meyer and the public schools.
Thank you, chief, and your department for participating in that. Anybody else? Welcome. Just give us your name and address, and tell us what you're thinking about tonight.
Julie Collins. I'm at 2869 Wallace Avenue. This is not my first time here. I was here back in 2016. I actually spoke to Mirma on the phone. Our concerns here, and I actually have some of my neighbors with us tonight, our concern here tonight is the Grandmark Motel and the rash of recent car and home break-ins on our street and the cul-de-sac being directly right there by the elementary school. It has gone drastically downhill. When I came in 2016, we talked, it was cleaned up. The motel went through some refacing. Some tenants were, I think, invited to leave, and it's been pretty fairly peaceful for a few years. This last, at least probably ten months, has been very bad. I personally have not been a victim of any of the break-ins. These lovely people are, that's why they're here, but since I've been here before, I'm breaking the ice for them. We are definitely concerned as a community, what's going on on our street, that cul-de-sac where we're at. We definitely have some problems. So I'm going to invite you up to.
Good evening. Welcome.
Oh, thank you. So my name is Travis Baker. I live on 3305 Sandcrest Street, which is right behind the Grandmark Motel. I live there with my wife Casey and our daughter Rayland, who is 18 months. And we're here tonight because it is becoming an absolute nightmare. I mean, we work full-time, we're parents. We don't have time to be a full-time parent, work all day, and then come home and be worried about our safety of our house, our safety of our daughter, our safety of ourselves. At first, some of the crimes were just small, where, you know, they would come and try to, you know, look for cars that were unlocked and take loose change or a couple dollars or whatever. But now, as of Thursday night into Friday morning, one of our neighbors, which was three houses down, their car was actually hot-wired and stolen. We all have ring doorbells, we're all really good at communicating with each other, and to see these types of criminals like walk through, you know, 20 feet from your house, 20 feet from where your daughter sleeps, it's really concerning. And really, we're here for a call to action because, yes, something happened in 2016 where we re-faced this, but now it's becoming too much. You can watch all the footage, and you can pretty much trace every one of these criminals right back to that hotel, right, you know, it's pretty obvious. So we've ourselves have probably called the police in the last eight months five times, and we're not alone. We're not the only ones calling the police all the time because of different crimes. And the one that stands out with me the most was I was actually on a fishing trip. So I was up in Luddington, and at four o'clock in the morning, we just get to the boat launch. I'm all excited to fish, and awesome, my ring doorbell goes off and motion, right? Okay, what's the motion? Somebody's at my door trying to get in my house, and my daughter and my wife are there, and it's like, what do you do being an hour and a half away? So it's becoming like dangerous for all of us, all of us with kids, all of us that don't have kids, but just in general, it's just becoming too much. So we're here for a call to action. Something needs to be done. I don't know what that looks like, if it's closing that down. I don't know what that looks like, if it's closing that down, if it's putting better fencing or whatever it is. But these criminals that are staying here aren't just like, you know, they're not, they're, they're past this point of simple. I mean, there, there's cameras right in front of them and they don't even care. They're walking right up to their houses and stealing these cars. I mean, it's, it's, they're getting bold. And at what point are they going to just be breaking into houses, breaking in and stealing whatever they need or hurting whoever they need to hurt? So, that's how we're here. I wish we all from our neighborhood could have made it because I feel like everyone feels the same. But this group right here is all supporting it, so.
Well, thank you for coming tonight. Thanks for letting us know about that. You know, I know maybe Chief is here, maybe five years ago or so, we had quite a few conversations about that. So, I'm thinking maybe Chief and I and city manager get together soon and, and address it. Chief, is there anything you want to add tonight for these folks or?
Just with the motor vehicle thefts, that is a lot larger problem than just that area. I'm not trying to minimize your concerns. We do garage patrols throughout the city. But with the amount of juvenile crimes, which the juveniles are not coming from the Grandmark. And I'm not saying that all your issues are not, but just addressing that. He saw the news release from Kent County Sheriff's Department. They ended up in pursuit last couple nights with four stolen cars in one apartment complex and all the drivers were driven by house. So, it's a lot bigger issue. We are definitely working to address those concerns to the best of our ability. So, and we'll definitely meet and look to see if there's anything else that we can do.
And to communicate back with you, I'd encourage you to contact any one of us, maybe. Marcy, what, what do we use connect at?
Connect@cityofgranville.com.
Connect@cityofgranville and it will go out. I mean, a number of people will get it, probably all council members do, Dennis will get it, Chief can get that. So, and then maybe we can follow up with you and meet or?
Right, sounds great. That's perfect. And, I mean, just to go off your point, like, I understand that crime is up across, you know, the whole state or the world really, but just eliminating like these hotspots. I mean, I, you say the Grandmark Motel to anybody and they're like, oh geez, yeah, you don't want to walk by there at night. You know, you like, that is such a hotspot where just getting rid of that, I don't know if it's that simple. I mean, it's obviously not that simple, but getting rid of that eliminates a lot of your crime in Granville. I mean, really, that's how I feel, looking at it from maybe just from my own eyes. But you start to eliminate those hotspots and a lot of your crime would go down.
My lot of adding right here. I just wanted to say, first off, we appreciate everything that you do. We are very supportive, all of us are, that are here of any police force, anybody. And I think it's just the frustration of, we, like we said, we all have video footage. Every single one of us in the neighborhood have bought $200, $300 footage of multiple cameras because of our frustration. And our one neighbor who lives very close to the Grandmark, she's literally got the footage of them walking to and from the Grandmark. This most recent car theft that happened, the truck, they went back to the Grandmark Motel, parked the truck there all night. So, they stole it at 3:44 a.m., went back to the motel and then at 8:30, our neighbor drove past motel and the truck's sitting there and they're right there. And it's just becoming very frustrating. And I think it's more so frustrating that, again, we support you so much with everything we have. And I know you guys, people are trying to defend you, that's not the case here. But it's just frustrating watching or calling multiple times and it being, okay, yeah, like, just lock your cars. Yes, I agree. But whether the next action be somebody sit in our neighborhood, a cop in a unmarked car and sit there with the lights off and then like, they're going to come. It's the same two people and these two specific people are not juveniles. The scary part is, is the one guy was literally, he watches the guy every single time it's a break-in or they go to try to open a car. Like, there's one guy doing the job, one guy sitting there with his hands right here, guarantee you, there's a gun. There's something there, he's watching into people's windows to see if they're waking up. And it's just becoming a frustration. I told my husband, we have our daughter's window, you can walk right up to her window from our road. And like you said, our, the sidewalk's 20 feet. And like, I'm thinking about putting a piece of wood like you would with a slider inside of her window. And it's like, how, what point do we have change? And my mom, I've been in Granville my whole life, but like even my mom, she's been in Granville her whole life. It used to be what, red, I don't know what that motel used to be called, red top or?
Red carpet.
Yeah, like even back in the seventies, it was still the same issue. And it's like, what point do, does this community say, okay, Granville's a really safe area, but anytime I tell people I live on 28th and Iven Rest, oof, the motel's right there. And it's not like anything on you guys, it's just like, where are we going to see change? Whether that be fencing wrapped all the way around or I know that your other members of like the police force have been at the motel and they're not willing to work with the city. That's unfortunate.
Like I said, we will, we will have a meeting and we will get back with you.
Awesome.
I mean, it may take a couple of weeks, but we will do that.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you all for taking the time and coming and letting us know.
Thank you for listening.
Sure. Just come on up, give us your name, address and let us know what you're thinking about tonight.
So, I'm Michael Johnston, live at 2940 Wallace. Me and my wife moved there 14 years ago. We moved to the Granville community because it was a safe community and because of the educational system. Our son is actually part of the robotics team, is for the 7th grade and he has been for four, four years now or so. A few years back, there was a string of robberies pretty much along the same line. And we heard the same thing, it's probably just teenagers. Well, our house got hit four times. They actually stole the checks, wrote a check to himself, cashed it at the bank right next door. So, we had his name, I'm following him on Facebook. This is not a kid, was not a teenager, you know, I'm, basically I'm doing the police work. And I know police have, you know, they have restraints, what they can do and what they can get information from. And so, these last few months, you know, it's been kind of disheartening. Back then when it was happening, and it was happening all over the neighborhood, I was working third shift at the time. So, on the weekends, I would actually stay up all night. I would sit outside. I never once saw a police officer's vehicle go by. This last few months, I've been trying to do it on the weekends again, stay up late. Once or twice I'll see him go by. To me, this has been happening between 3:00 and 6:00 a.m. on a regular basis. There should be police presence in that neighborhood as a deterrent and I don't ever see it. You know what I mean? These guys are just getting bolder and bolder. The more you get away with, the bolder you're going to get. And when is it going to happen where they walk into somebody's house, they hurt somebody, they assault somebody, they kill somebody? It's a possibility. This motel has had several issues. I know there was actually a homicide there a few years back, which was the first time in a few decades that the city of Granville's even seen a homicide. I, I just, I guess I would like to voice my opinion in saying that I believe police presence needs to be a lot more there. I've watched it over 14 years get less and less in our neighborhood. Used to see him drive by quite frequently during the daytime. I don't ever see him drive by in the daytime. Used to see him drive through at nighttime. Like I said, this is happening in between a certain time. I feel like there should be a lot more presence there. I've seen him go by once or twice at 30 miles an hour, just driving by. How are you going to catch somebody doing that? You need to go by frequently, you need, there needs to be a presence there to deter these people from wanting to come back over and over and over again. They hit the same areas all the time. They've come back to that cul-de-sac several times. There's people that have on my camera going back to that cul-de-sac several times and that's right around the corner. We, we were going, we went away this weekend and after the car rob theft, that's the first time I haven't felt safe leaving my house for a weekend, just for a weekend. I wanted to stay home because I don't feel safe in our neighborhood anymore. And that is sad to me because we've built a beautiful family in that neighborhood and we love the schools and we love the community of Granville. And it's just sad to me that it's gotten to this point where it just doesn't seem like it's taken very seriously. I every, I frequently hear that it's teenagers, it could be teenagers. It's not teenagers, it wasn't teenagers then and it's not teenagers now. And they're just ramping it up, so.
Appreciate the comments. I know that Chief is paying attention as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting us know your thoughts.
Can I ask a thing?
Sure. Or at least your name, so Marcy can do that for the notes.
My name's Jessica Scheck. I live at 2864 Wallace Avenue. I'm probably one of the neighbors that you were talking about. Our house is right next to the trail that leads back up into there. I, I don't want to be redundant because I know you guys have sat here and listened to all of our neighbors. But I just wanted you guys to know that I appreciate what you do and I appreciate what you guys have done to try to help us solve the crime of what's been happening. But my husband and I moved here two years ago specifically for your schools. Our daughter got in school of choice and we fought her, I'm her stepmom. We fought her mom in court specifically to get her into Granville schools. And we bought a house right across from the elementary and there were little things that would happen. But it has last, this time last year, our one-year-old, one of our, we have twins. Our son went to the hospital unexpectedly and we did not come home for three months. And not one time did we have to worry about any, we didn't have camera systems. I think maybe a few people had systems back then, but it was not a concern at all. And now I have six children and they are all afraid to go outside. They're afraid to go by the trail. They're afraid because we have homeless people sleeping out there. There's people that come outside and fight and cuss and threaten to kill each other. Like my, we worked really, really hard to get here and we appreciate everything you do. But I just wanted to let you guys know that hopefully your future Granville residents can grow up in a safe community because it's, it's really affecting us and it's really affecting my children's safety. They're, they're having nightmares and their windows are right by the trail and they keep coming back and forth right there. So, they don't even really want to play outside anymore. And it's, it's sad that it's changed that much in just a year. So, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you for coming tonight. And don't hesitate to call the police if there's issues.
Yeah, we, we have been, especially after it started kind of like ramping up. But the more I, I'm a stay-at-home mom, so I've kind of, I mean, I have six kids, but I have a little bit of time. And our new security camera is fun to, you know, play with. So, I watched some of the footage and you, you see these guys go in and out, in and out, in and out. And they're confident, they're leaned up against my van, they're looking at my cameras, they're in my backyard, they're, they're up by my garage, they're out where my children play, they're cutting through the field next to us to get to our neighbors and they're doing it with intention. And that's what's scary is it doesn't seem, they left all the change in my car. They left everything out. Like, it's the fact that you don't want petty change or, you know, whatever kind of money scares me that they know, they know. I mean, the, the minute they get up to my house, they know I got cameras, so they pull their stuff up and it seems like a whole operation that's bigger than just they want some change from our cars.
Again, a couple of reasons I encourage you to call the police. Number one, you need to be safe. And number two, the police keep track of these things and that's useful information to have.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, please do not think, well?
The police have been to our house a couple of times this past week. So, we cheered footage from other crimes as well because we got rid of a good spot, so.
Chief and I and Dennis will get together ASAP.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council? Yes, sir.
Much lighter topic. As most of you know, I'm Pete Dykeis, I'm your Granville KDL Kid District Library. I know I look a little different. I gave up on the hair on top and moved it to where it will grow, so I apologize. I just wanted to apologize for missing the last meeting where we gave the presentation. I'd love to blame somebody else, but superintendent's gone, but the school's so good. They've got my kid as a junior running off to community college and everything and I just completely lost track. So, also wanted to welcome new city manager, so Dennis, welcome. Hopefully we'll be talking and that's it.
Great, thanks for serving. Anything, we saw the library report, but anything?
I, I was excited to see the lights at the library. It looks really cool going out into the farmer's market and yeah, you know, I've, I've been parked in my car Monday and Thursday nights because my, my kid's taking math class at, at, you know, Kent Community College there. You know, he tells me about it each time and he's talking all this stuff and I'm just nodding. You know how it goes, right? I'm a graduate of Granville, but many, 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 many moons ago. And so, I go into the Grand Rapids Public Library, which is a beautiful library. Don't get me wrong, it's, it's great. But, you know, there's just something about, you know, all of the KDL libraries are special, but the Granville one, we talk about the green space at the middle school and the other stuff. It really is a community center when I go in there, you know, I see the, you know, the families there during the day, you know. About the stay-at-home moms, my wife, you know, going in there with her kids and doing stuff. So, you know, that's it, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving. Anybody else here? Kylo, welcome. Warmed up after the spending three hours in the cold the other night at the parade?
I'd just say that that was an awesome festival. It was very cold though. The fire pits didn't even keep us warm, but it was fun. And there was just huge crowds in front of our float. So, got to talk to a lot of people about trees and it was pretty exciting. So, tonight I'm here for the city tree board. And at most of the summer, we've been working at trying to map out where all the gas lines are so that we'll know the future planting sites that are available for trees. And pretty much in the city of Granville, the gas lines run on the south side of the road and then they run on the east side of the road. And the electric lines run on the north side of the road and on the west side. So, we're going to be pretty limited on what we can put on street trees, which is one of our main goals. We always want to plant trees along the street for multiple reasons. But what we're looking at right now is if we want to continue to increase our canopy, we need to get residents involved and they need to be able to plant trees on their own property. So, Ken, the former city's manager, sent me an article from a lady in Maryland and she's an arborist for that city. They actually hold a tree sale and the tree sale is like they, you prepay for everything like in January or February and then the trees are delivered in the springtime when it's a good time to be planting. And what they do, the city promotes the green infrastructure by subsidizing the trees and they pay for 50% of the trees. And she said they cap it at $5,000 because otherwise it could just get unlimited. And what she said, they've never hit their $5,000. And so, at the tree board, we've started doing a lot of research, what nurseries are better to work with? What, what kind of trees do we want to offer? Because we'd want to bring a proposal to you, but I thought if I just came in here with a proposal and didn't give you any heads up on it, you, it would be pretty hard to consider it. So, I just am asking if you would think about it and if anybody has any ideas or trees that they think should come in. Of course, we'd use the tree inventory for the street trees in the public land to decide some of the trees that would be offered. And most of the nurseries are pretty willing to work with us. And I already talked to J R, if they do an Earth Day celebration, which would be like a week before Arbor Day, we could actually hand out the trees at that time, the people could come and pick them up and we could hold another planting class or things like that. But it would be a great way to actually celebrate Arbor Day in a big way here in the city of Granville. And I think the support I've received from the city council and the mayor that you'd want to get behind supporting like people to plant a tree on their property. And some people might be able to afford that bigger tree, some might be able to afford a littler tree. And we want to make it open so that everybody can be included. So, I'm just asking you to kind of get, you know, put some thought behind it. If you have any ideas or suggestions, you're more than welcome to email me and see if we can put a proposal together that would make sense. So, the tree board and the tree project and the city could work together and people would know how much you support the green system that we're trying to build.
That's great. Your timing is perfect too, because we're getting together and doing some budgeting in the next couple of months. So, perfect timing on that one. So, Randy, do you?
Excuse me. No, I guess Kyla, good job. Thank you. And the tree board. Just kind of looking for a unofficial collective nod that yes, this is worthwhile pursuing because there's going to have to be a lot of time invested in this going forward. Charlie has some uh money in the DPW for street trees or, or for trees. And uh, just kind of want to pursue this, which is collectively think that.
Yeah, I like the idea. It's capped, so it doesn't go crazy. And I guess if you hit that $5,000 or whatever the limit, that's a great problem, right? A lot of people are wanting trees and if we really are serious about increasing the tree canopy.
It's good for the project board because there's an educational component and sustainability.
I see some nodding here and.
Collective nod.
Pardon me?
Do you have, have people to help plant them too then?
You, Josh.
And help people plant their trees.
What I think would be kind of my vision of it, and sometimes when you get into the details, you have to adjust that a little bit. My vision of it would be to get people excited maybe and to um, kind of like use this to drive people to the tree classes that we already teach people to how to advocate and how to idea tree and how to plant a tree. So that would help create the awareness of trees in Granville. And like the first class in January, at the end of January, maybe we could, that would be their added bonus. They're the first ones to be able to purchase a tree off the site. And the tree project would then take on the responsibility of building like a Shopify account and being able to purchase. And then um, that way it wouldn't have to, I won't dump it all on Jane and say, hey, will you take these payments for us? But um, as people are going to that site to be able to buy things, then the tree project could be a resource. There's a lot of tools out there like iTree tool or Google Earth where you pull it up and people are like, yeah, I want a white pine. Well, let me see, your yard's a postage stamp size. Maybe a white pine isn't a better fit. Maybe we should look at something that's columnar or you know, like that's where we could be a resource to people and it would really help. Once the planting, I think people will get behind it, but I think the first year will be kind of quiet. I mean, like if we can plant 10 or 15 trees that first year, I'd be super excited. We were actually able to certify 10 um, community foresters that have actually gone through our program. I think those people, we could set a schedule up and we could just like go from house to house and somewhat, somewhat like we did with uh schools on Arbor Day and just be able to help people plant their tree. We sure don't want them to buy a tree that doesn't live. So.
Well, thanks for sharing your vision with us. It, you kind of got the collective nod, so.
Yeah, we're good. Go ahead and do it.
Well.
I mean, I'll bring a proposal. I won't like, I'm not going forward yet.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your service on Tree Project and the Tree Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council? Come on up to the podium and get your name, address. Anybody? Last call. Okay. Next item on the agenda is uh, under ordinances and resolutions, there's a proposed resolution in support of a Spark Grant application. Matt, I know you've been very much involved and I see Chris is here as well. Kim, rather?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, tonight we have a resolution for you to consider applying for a half million dollar Spark Grant to construct the bridge across Buck Creek behind the cemetery and provide access to the property back there. The grant would also include the construction of the trails back there, as we've discussed multiple times, for anything from snowshoers to skiers to uh multibles. Tim Hofer with More Versioning, you've seen him up here several times. He can bring you in on more of those uh detailed items. Um, if you have any questions, be happy to answer those.
Yeah. You have any questions or there was some, there was some information, I think, in the packets?
When is the grant, when's the deadline for the grant?
Next Monday.
Monday.
Next Monday. Um, just wanted to let you know too, I think I've got a copy. I did get two letters of support from neighbors and adjacent property owners and I expect two more shortly.
Great. Well, some of those are together.
Yeah, a couple, maybe it seems like a, a couple of years ago, but it was definitely pre-COVID. We had a couple of neighborhood meetings and all the neighbors who have adjacent property got together and said if anybody's got objections, please voice them now. And uh, there's actually a lot of support for it. So.
Yeah, that's great. I think that'll help.
Randy. Oh, I'm sorry, JR.
No, I, I think this is awesome um, for several reasons. One, I know that as a council, we've already um designated some ARPA dollars for this project, but kudos to the Parks and Rec folks. I know Mr. Christmas is here and Councilman Maringa has been pushing for ways that we can deflect some of those ARPA funds down the road for other city projects. And this is one fantastic way to do that. And I just want to give those guys a shout out that uh, this is a great way to continue these projects without uh tapping into some of our resources. And um, wow, this is exciting. There's a lot of cool, cool opportunities here. Um, I hope that the grant application goes well. And I'm, I'm excited to see in the application memorandum about how there's second opportunities, kind of like our Mil grant. Yeah, Spark Grant application. There's a, a second round in case.
And a third round.
And a third round.
Yeah.
So this is, this is fantastic.
But we want to get it early so we can get it considered in the first round. Then we, if we don't get it the first time, we got the second or third round, the application will stay in the queue.
Yeah, we should be able to get some feedback if it doesn't go through in the first round. I think they're giving $15 million the first round and then 25 million in the second and 25 million in the third. Um, that'll be, they, they say sometime in the spring and then sometime in the summer. Hopefully they don't have dates yet. But so, yeah, uh, there's, there's some folks that think we have a pretty good shot. There's a lot of the socioeconomic and uh, different things that the DNR is going to be looking at. Um, you know, outside of the application, it's about 30%, 30% of the uh, scoring um, just based on location and numbers from CDC and some things like that. So um, yeah, it's going to be pretty interesting to see, see how it goes.
Just for full disclosure, I do own adjacent property. I, yeah, got a long line. So I realize might lose a little privacy, but yeah, love to have some fun stuff, that's some things that we don't have in Granville. Likes, I mean, like moonlight snowshoeing or whatever. Yeah.
Beautiful piece of property.
Yeah. provides access to city property that currently no one can access except maybe our cemetery.
Well, and it does it in a safe way because even though there's a no trespassing sign on that bridge, people uh do, do go across that bridge from time to time. So I've heard. Other questions? What, maybe you answered it, Matt, but when, when do they make decisions about this?
So the first round, they're going to decide that we should know by the end of January.
Wow, that's fairly soon.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, so it's ARPA money. So the ARPA money has to be under contract, like a construction contract by the end of 2024. And then it has to be all spent by, uh, I think it's October of 2026, just like the other ARPA funds that you've got. So uh, they're trying to roll this out really quick. They're doing it in three stages so they can kind of see how the first stage goes and what kind of projects they get.
Is it more helpful if we eventually, like in the second or third round, if we don't get it first or second, then say, well, we'll match part, we'll do?
Potentially. I think that's one.
We hate.
That's one, I think that's one way to look at it. I mean, they say, um, they said during the multiple webinars we attended and in the grant application that a match is not scored. They say it's, uh, they say it's encouraged, but there's no, there's no penalty for not. There's no uh, kudos for having it unless your project is over a million dollars. And then they do require it uh, because their grant cap is a million dollars. So.
Well, one of the letters of support that I got, I wish I had brought a copy. I think Dennis or Matt have copies already. But I'll, I'll make sure you all got them because she would be a great writer. And I, hopefully if they look, hopefully they do look at that because I thought, wow, she's a wonderful writer. She talks about the throaty sound of wildlife frogs and the owls and I'm like, yeah, this is pretty cool. And coyotes back there.
Well, and I, and I think honestly, if I'm, if I'm a, somebody looking at the grant applications to have support from those properties that are uh, adjacent, it would.
We'll put her letter first because it was out of the line. So. Okay, we do have a resolution. And I'm sorry, any questions for either this gentleman?
Yeah, just one question, Tim. When we get the award in the first round, will we be able to apply for additional projects in round three?
Yeah, yeah. So I think, not positive the number, I think there's maybe a, a cap of four projects. And you can apply to, you know, multiple projects with the same applica-, you know, same application period and you can, you can rate them. But this first one came out so fast, I think the, the grant was, the application was released maybe in the end of October. Um, so, but yeah, yeah. Whether or not you uh, get the grant or not, you could add in some other projects if you want, but they do ask for prioritization. So.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
We've looked at that already a little bit too. We've got some other projects.
Just shout out to Kim too. Thank you for everything you're doing on the park.
That's what you pay me for.
Lot, you get a lot of volunteer time. So thank you very, very much. Marcy, what would this resolution number be?
Thirty-two ninety-one.
Thirty-two ninety-one. So a motion to adopt uh, resolution thirty-two ninety-one, resolution dedicating matching funds for a natural resource Spark Grant application for property located south of the Granville Cemetery. Motion and support. Comments, questions? Now, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Trus?
Yes.
Vanderoff?
Yes.
Maringa?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And Mirra.
Yes. Uh, next item, consent agenda. Uh, we have a number of reports. Um, we have the um, fire, clean water plant, a fire report for November, the clean water plant for September report, the fiscal year twenty, two thousand twenty-one to twenty-two healthcare and pension report, the police November report as well, well as the same month uh, Treasury report. We also have minutes uh, from the October meeting of the Park and Recreation Board, the Environmental Sustainability Committee no, uh, from November, the Historical Commission from November and Planning Commission's December seven meeting, as well as the DDA and Economic Development Corporation minutes uh, from last week, uh, December eight. And also a resolution designating Dennis as the street administrator designate. And maybe, I don't know whether anybody told you that, we also have uh, the city forester. You become the city forester as well. So.
Wow, that's exciting.
Yeah, yeah. I know, I just realized that uh, city manager was the city forest. And I thought, wow, this is a special, you know, outfit for that. I think of, you know, something from Ty, Tyrol area or whatever. Anyway, we have the consent agenda. And Randy, since, yeah, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda tonight?
Support.
And support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no.
Just had a quick question about that um, street administrator. Is that like a charter thing or a state law thing? You have to designate somebody as your street administrator?
That's kind of a Randy question. I'm gonna, I'll guess state law.
So it's, looks like a state and uh, so.
Jane, say it.
For your jurisdiction.
Good guess. Good guess. Next item, city manager's report, first week.
Uh, nothing. I'm still stuck on being city forester, so.
Probably our designation. It's true that we just haven't uncovered that yet. That's one of the.
It'll get worse or better depending on your perspective.
I've been instructed this first week on which doors I'm supposed to lock and unlock in the morning and the evening. Uh, I hope that that's the case and I'm not just being pranked by my assistant city manager. But everybody's been very welcoming and I'm so excited to be here. Heidi and I have uh, made lots of trips looking for a house and we continue to do that. So. Thank you to everybody that has welcomed. The office, if everybody doesn't know, the city manager's office is right back there. And the, and it is a regular stream of people last week coming in to welcome me and to say how excited they are about what's coming up. So.
Great. Thank you. Anything else? Nope. Okay. All right. Councilmember comments. JR, let's start with you tonight.
Well, um, obviously piggyback on that. Uh, Dennis, welcome. I'm excited to work with you and excited for the future here. Uh, you guys have a flyer. I'll mention this next week to the recycling event. Fairbelt's here. Uh, the Environmental Sustainability Committee is doing a recycling event. We've done this a couple of times. Uh, please bring uh, clean foam and cardboard. So as you're unwrapping potential Christmas packages in the next couple of weeks, we are doing a collection on December thirtieth over there at Harbor Foam on Prairie, uh, near Wentworth uh, for a couple of hours on Friday, December thirtieth. Um, I know we talked about those budget sessions. Marcy had printed out a potential budget session. I know I would just, according to Dennis's memo, I have a conflict on March twentieth as a proposed budget session, planning session. Um, just wanted to throw that out there publicly. So as we move towards that. And then finally, to the folks who came tonight, talk about Grand Mark. Um, I know at the DDA uh, meeting this past week, they talked about under their action plan prioritization, the Grand Mark did come up. Um, they're ahead of you on this. Uh, the chief is, is nodding his head and all these things. We're nodding our heads. It's a problem in our community. Um, there's a lot of issues with this and we want to move forward appropriately. There's obviously personal property rights and all these things that we have to go through. But we're hearing you. We listen to you. We have children. We want this community to be safe as well. But thank you for coming tonight.
That's it. Thank you. You said everything I wanted to say. Sorry. Um, well, welcome to Dennis. We're pleased to have you here. Looking forward to uh, to your leadership here. Um, thank you to uh, the Ivan Reston Twenty-Eighth Street neighbors for here. I thought you all spoke really, really eloquently and passionately and I, I was really moved. So I want to thank you all for being here and for staying here, for to listen to our comments at the end too. So that's great. Thank you. Um, thank you, Pete, for coming up and introducing yourself. I did not recognize you with your look there. Thank you. I'm, I'm a fan of your work. Uh, thank you uh, for the job that you do for KDL. And thank you to Mayor Mas and his son for attending my Christmas concert on Saturday night. Really appreciate you guys being there. Thank you. That's all.
Yeah. Welcome Dennis uh, for the third time. Uh, glad to have you here. Um, and thank you to the uh, the Wallace and the uh, I don't know, Twenty-Eighth Street Corridor people for, for uh, sharing your concerns tonight. We will listen. Um, and then uh, shout out to Teresa for another uh, great Christmas at the Commons. And uh, she topped last year's greatness by shooting confetti right after your speech, which I thought was the highlight of the whole night. So. I mean, your speech was good. That was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome Dennis for the fourth time. So.
Thank you. Never gets old.
Look forward to working with you and getting to know you and uh, glad that you had a good first week. So. Thanks again to Teresa for the festivities. I think we had a really good turnout. Uh, it seems like the last couple of years, it's kind of grown back to maybe what it was pre-COVID a little bit. Nice to have people outside and moving around and it looked like everybody was enjoying themselves even though it was kind of cold. So. And thanks to the neighbors for coming out. You know, we take some guts to come up and stand up here and, and talk to us in a public meeting like that. So we hear your concerns and we hope to find some recent resolution there for you and, and appreciate hearing about some of those issues because we don't always all know what's going on in the neighborhoods either. And it's important that we, we hear these things. So um, that, yeah. And the last thing I wanted to mention is um, appreciated Ken setting up a tour for a few of us earlier um, last week to go, a few of us got to go out into the uh, County, um, Dispatch Center over in Grand Rapids and see where all the nine-one-one operations are um, for pretty much all of Kent County. Everybody except the city of Grand Rapids essentially. And that was pretty fascinating to see kind of how that all works. And we got to see one of our, our local guys who was working down there, Mark, and um, hear a little bit about how it all works and how many calls they take and see all the computer screens and all the GPS and all the technology. It's pretty, pretty impressive. So thanks to Ken and the chiefs. You guys were there too. Um, pretty impressive. So appreciate that.
That's it. Tough group to follow, but JR, do you know the hours on the thirtieth?
Yeah, it's two to four on that Friday.
Okay, that's good to know.
And you can see their massive expansion they have going on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and I just want to thank you guys because it's nice to see you because it just adds a personal element or the, a face to the issue. And so thank you for coming. This has been an ongoing thing for a long time, but appreciate you, you being here. Thank you, Dennis. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, neighbors, thank you so much for coming. It, it does. Yeah, neighbors, thank you so much for coming, it, it does make a difference, glad you took the time, thank you so much. Uh, and then, just to follow up, Josh's comment about the nine-one-ones call center, very, very interesting, I, it was not what I expected, it's very calm, there was a dog there, very, kind of dim lighting, I thought it was gonna be like this really busy, frantic kind of a place, but it's good to know how calm these people are, because those of us on the other end of a nine-one-one, we're not always so calm, right, so, very, very interesting. Uh, just kind of a reminder, uh, Granville Community Choir has a concert this Thursday, community members, uh, that's gonna be Thursday at seven o'clock at First Reform Church, um, and, Marcy, thank you for running a clean election, and just an accurate election, and I understand, uh, votes are gonna be recounted on a proposal two and three, right, for all of Kent County, including Grand and all, or for, for certain?
Just certain precincts, part of Grand Rapids and Kentwood, um, and maybe there's one other community, too.
I'm anxious to see the results, it'll just confirm that you, you, uh, do things accurately. Uh, other comment, Paul, thank you for the great concert the other night, I learned something, I know that Paul is a great, um, trombone player, and plays in the Grand Rapids Symphonic Band, which does the concerts in the high school, and it's surprising, I mean, you guys are really, really good, top-notch professionally, really, really good, but during one of the songs, the other night, as my son and I were listening to them, they played, and it was beautiful, and Paul was playing the trombone, and, oh, and then they put their instruments down, and they all sang, and it was beautiful, and I didn't know he had such a good voice, Paul, I mean, very, very impressive. If you get a chance, the next concert, I think is in February, is, is it called Vesuvius, or, or-
I haven't even looked at the music.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm really going down, so, anyway, Grand Rapids Symphonic Band, I think they've got a Facebook page, if not, they will soon, probably, so.
Thank you for your kind words, the band is really good.
They are really good, yeah, so, anyway, that's all I've got, thanks, everybody, for being here tonight, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Support, any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Okay, have a good evening, and a wonderful Christmas, Paul.